...President Biden.
Present.
President Counsel Cahill.
Present.
President Counsel Capano.
Present.
President Counsel Flucci.
Present.
President Counsel Crichton.
Present.
President Counsel Seer.
Present.
President Counsel Boyd.
Present.
President Counsel Lozey.
Present.
President Counsel Net.
Present.
President Counsel Valen.
Present.
President Counsel Trahan.
Present.
President Counsel Leven. Present. Do we all please rise for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the project over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to accept the minutes of February 28th and March 13th.
Motion made, accept, admit it, second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counsel Seer.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to recognize the wonderful kids at Brickett School.
Motion made, second it, suspend the rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Seer, if you could come to the podium. It's, uh, the city council's pleasure this evening to, uh, once again recognize the Brickett Elementary School, uh, the fifth grade. I think as everybody will remember, uh, probably a couple of months ago, they came in front of us and, uh, did a presentation on a science project they put together that was very comprehensive. You could tell they spent a lot of time behind it, they worked hard, and, uh, their efforts paid off. Uh, it's been in the paper. Uh, the, the city of Lynn is very proud of the Brickett Elementary School. Uh, the state of Massachusetts is very proud of the Brickett Elementary School. They won the 2012 Disney Planet Challenge, which was the grand prize out of, I believe, three hundred and fifty, uh, contestants nationwide. Give her a round of applause. The Brickett Elementary School also, uh, holds a special place, and I know Counselor Cahill's heart, who is a, uh, alumni of Brickett School, as am I, as well as my, uh, eight brothers and sisters, uh, and my father. Uh, with that, I'd like to recognize, uh, the ward counselor in the Brickett School area, Darren Seer.
First of all, let me, uh, congratulate Donna Wayland, the teacher there, she's give time. An unbelievable job from what I hear, parents always talk about you, I hear the kids sometimes talking about you, which, I mean, that means a lot when you hear kids saying nice things about their teacher. Also, uh, Mrs. Cole, the principal there, uh, you know, I talked to some of the parents from that school, and they tell me, "You've been a godsend in the last, uh, year or so, and you, you've come there." Dr. Latham for supporting all the programs there, unbelievable, but most importantly, we're here to recognize the kids. And, uh, I can't tell you, as a ward counselor, as your ward counselor, how proud I am for that, for this achievement that you've accomplished. People knock Lynn all the time, but, uh, they don't get into our schools, and they don't get into the system and see the wonderful things that take place every single day. I think we have the best elementary schools, we have the greatest middle schools, and we're working on even making them better right now. In our high schools, I'll challenge any high school academic wise, not just in the country, in the state, but in the country. Lynn is a great place, and you're proving that. Keep up the good work, kids. Congratulations.
If you may ask, Donna Wayland, Principal Cole, and Superintendent Latham up to the podium, please.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank, um, the city council for inviting us to come this evening. It's quite an honor to be here and, um, to, uh, be recognized, we really appreciate that. Um, we started this pro- project off, it was to, um, basically help the environment and allow the students to be able to reach all the standards in a, in a different way. And, um, i- it's amazing how much has come out of this, and it's, we didn't do it by ourselves, we had a lot of help from the community, and from our school and the staff, and just everyone embraced this project that the kids did. And the nicest thing is being their teacher is seeing the enthusiasm that the students had with this project, and the eagerness that they had every day coming in. My, my most favorite question hearing, hearing from them in the morning is, "Are we working on our project today?" And that was pretty neat. So, um, the, the great bunch of kids, and, uh, once again, we really want to thank the whole community for all of your help with this project, and for, um, just embracing us with this. Thank you.
I congratulate you kids as I have before, and I will continue to do so. You certainly have mu- brought fame and pride to this city as well as your school, and I think, Mr. Seer, I agree with you, we have the greatest school department, the greatest kids, and certainly the greatest teachers and principals, and I'm very proud of that fact. So congratulations, Donna, wonderful job and kids, congratulations to you.
I just want to say, of course, we're very proud of the kids, but we have had such an enormous, um, outreach of well wishes and support throughout the community, and it has really proven to the kids that people care, and what they do does make a difference. Alexander Patton, come forward, please, Alex. Hannah Fuccioni, come on up. Juliana Varadis. Marcelo Cunego. Julio Cora. Ademaris Sanchez. Ashari Gomez. Hillary Rummels. Marie Martinez. Maxwell Vermeek. Morenica Smith. Hela Chow. Tiffany Kugan. Emilio Vendo- Mendova. Devin Kara.
If any parents or family members would want to come inside here and take a picture, you're more than welcome. Counsel Lozey.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules to recognize the Eastland Pop Warner A-Squad, uh, that, uh, accomplished a state and New England championship, and went to Florida.
Motion made, second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Counsel Lozey.
I'd just like to say that, uh, I've had the privilege of coaching the, uh, Eastland Pop Warner A-Squad last year. Uh, unfortunately, we didn't go as far as this year's squad that actually won the state championship and the, uh, New England Regionals, and represented the New England, uh, uh, Pop Warner down in Florida. I just want to say a, a few quick things, uh, having been involved with the Eastland Pop Warner, it's, uh, it's quite a system. They, the kids work real hard. Unlike any other sport, they spend hours and hours and, uh, the entire month of August leading up to the season, and it requires a lot of hard work, dedication, commitment, time, and sacrifice. And, uh, along with, uh, the parents, many of you are here in town attendance, uh, the league, and, uh, all of our high schools benefit, it's like a farm system, that this Eastland Pop Warner, uh, they bring in, uh, really good talent into the high schools. So, I can't say enough of that, and at this time, I'd like to, uh, invite the, uh, coaches up here, beginning with the head coach, Dave Ball.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Wayne, the city council, for giving us, uh, his time tonight. I also would like to thank the parents who are here, um, it was a real joy, uh, coaching his sons this year. Um, this was the first time that Eastland had sent an A-team, uh, not only to New England's, uh, but down to Disney World. Uh, we were eleven and oh during the regular season and the playoffs, um, we had to go down to Disney World to get our first loss, we lost the eventual national champions in Florida. Um, it was a great experience, um, the fundraising was short notice, but a lot of people in the city, uh, stepped up for us. Um, the lazy dog, um, stepped up for us Thursday night before we all had to leave, um, but I would like to thank, um, all the parents. Um, I'd like to also recognize, um, my assistant coaches, um, being the head coach, you get talked to a lot, your name gets in the paper, but, uh, like any team, like the players, uh, without my assistant coaches, uh, I would not be as good a coach, and we would not be that good a team, so, um, Carlos Soto. She was like a coach, but in Pop Warner, we always have a team mom, Teresa Boyd. Jimmy Kimba. A few coaches are not here tonight, um, one is Dennis Murphy, we got him to come back from Westland to coach with us, so that was very helpful. Hurt Westland, but helps us. Um, I also would like to thank Peter Holy, um, he's listed on our staff. Peter was, um, part of my staff before he took over the English job, him and I played together in high school. Um, and he's very supportive of me, a lot of our players go and want to play in English, as they do in tech, St. Mary's. Um, but Peter's always a big supporter of mine, um, so I'd like to also thank him, uh, for his support, he's not here tonight. Uh, probably working, mostly, but based on his shift, but I'd like to thank Peter also. Steven Deefo. Elijah Rova. CJ Thehendas. Stevie Collins. Manuel Soto. Michael Kazadi. Richard Newhall. Jamil Charles. Kyle McNeil. Justin Lewis. Danny Smith. Alfredo Perez. Nick Nielsen Nissano. Anthony Dela Cruz. Lenny Alvarez. Stefan Bravely. Janathan Ayala. James Kimber Jr. Zachary Wade. Um, this next player, we actually brought in from PB, Billy Tean. Christopher Aguilera. It's just easier to call this kid, Big O. Just read off some names, another assistant coach, um, actually played for us in, in Eastland, and has come back to coach like a lot of us do. I played in Eastland, Mr. Trahan played in Eastland, us a long, long time ago, um, but David Ainge. Some players who are not here tonight, Isaiah Davis. Jabulah. Devani Contreras. Sakata. Malik Bennett. And Michael Webber. Again, I'd like to thank the city council for taking time, um, it was a great experience, um, as I said, it was a great experience for me coaching these boys. I've done this for seventeen years, first time I'd ever been to Florida, so it was new for me also. I'd again like to thank all my assistant coaches, and, uh, I'd like, again, to thank you for the support from the city of Lynn, they helped get us down there financially, so thank you. If any of the parents would like to come up and take a photograph, feel free to come on up and, uh, do so.
Counsel Capano.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to both the Ways and Means Committee, opposed?
Yes, to suspend the rules to go to Ways and Means Committee, your court, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, is this going to go to one particular item?
Yes, uh, a resolution in support of contractual workers.
Uh, thank you, Bob. That motion to suspend the rules was for the one item on the committee report, will address the rest of the committee report with the other committees. Uh, Counsel Capano.
Yes, uh, I'd, I'd like to have the resolution read, and, uh, ask that, even though it is not a public hearing, that, uh, a couple of, uh, workers, uh, come up and speak for a couple, three, a couple of minutes.
Resolution, in the year two thousand twelve, resolution in support of contractual employees at Logan Airport. Whereas workers contracted by airlines at Logan Airport, including security officers, airplane cleaners, baggage handlers, and wheelchair assistants, make as little as eight to nine dollars per hour, and whereas more than one hundred and eighty of these contracted workers and their families live in the city of Lynn, and whereas, according to the Massachusetts Economic Independence Index of twenty ten, a single adult with no dependents must earn thirteen dollars and sixty cents per hour in order to live self-sufficiently, and whereas underpaying airport workers across Massachusetts' tax pay is millions of dollars by burdening the state's public assistance program, such as subsidized housing and common public care, and whereas underpaying airport workers may also impact the quality of service and can jeopardize safety of workers and travelers, the city council of the city of Lynn requests that the Massachusetts Port Authority take all necessary actions to ensure that the contracted employees at Logan Airport receive a living wage, their benefits, and have the right to dignity, respect, and a voice at work.
Thank you, would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to grant, uh, I'd like to say that, um, you know, I appreciate the support of the Ways
the support of the Ways and Means and anticipating the support of the full council. It's 180 employees that live in the city of Lynn that are working, you know, a lot part-time for, you know, $8, $9 an hour jobs that used to be full-time and sustaining jobs at one time when the airlines subcontracted out. You know, they mismanaged a lot of their finances over here and took it out on the workers. So, this is their way to divide up those jobs. And what these workers are trying to do is create a floor and try to put a floor down where the job becomes more self-sustaining. So, you could raise a family. So, you know, right now, people are working a lot in two, three jobs with no benefits, making minimal amount of money. There's just no way to raise a family. So, this is a way to fight that. And this resolution will go a long way in helping them out to do that.
Thank you. I give a motion on the floor to accept. I have a second. Before we call a roll, Counsel Kapano, you indicated that you did have somebody in the audience or people that would like to speak on behalf of the resolution?
Yes.
If you could just come to the podium and identify yourself.
My name is Miguel Eduardo. I'm a community organizer for SEIU 615. This is Eduardo Perez. He is a worker at the airport at Logan Airport. I would just like to thank the city council for having us here today and hearing the issue and supporting us and listening to us. I would like to take the motion for Labor Council. They've been very supportive in our campaign towards getting these workers a fair wage at the airport. I have to say that before I started with this campaign, I had no idea how bad the jobs at the airport were. Most of the people that I talked to actually think that these jobs are really good-paid jobs with healthcare implications, but that's not the case. Some of the worst cases at the airport are people that are actually being paid below minimum wage because they are qualified as service employees. So, wages can range from $6 to $7.50 when they're below minimum wage. But again, thank you. And I would just like to pass the word to Eduardo, who actually works at the airport. Thank you.
Actually, we represent like 70, 100 employees. We're looking for better standards for them because actually they have to work like three jobs. A lot of the guys there are registered on the Lynn City. And we think if they have better standards, they can have better time for the family. Because actually, they have to do like three jobs. And that's why we're looking for the resolution for better standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey? Absent Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Counsel Ford.
I recognize a former class football captain who went on a scholarship to the prep school in Connecticut. He's chosen Meramec to further his football by an academic career. And he says supporting his friends who work at the airport, Danny Olmert.
Thank you, Counsel.
We have no communications and no public hearings. We have one public hearing to be set down. Tution of Fiesta Shows Eugene Dean for Commission for Accountable Fundraiser for Fourth of July fireworks at King Park at Lynn English on Friday, July 6 through Sunday, July 8 would set up on July 5.
This is a motion to set down a public hearing. What's the motion, Counsel? Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill? Absent Counsel Kapano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Unfinished business, Public Property Committee meeting of March 13th, order that the city-owned property parcel 071256095, Granite Street, be granted to ZEA, the Third Realty Trust in consideration of $1,800 with stipulations attached that property be used for parking and landscape only.
Counsel Calucci?
Public Committee, motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Absent Counsel Kapano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Finance meeting of March 13th, order that the city control be authorized to make the following appropriation transfer from the ISD special account to account 9J120-7800, ISD 750,000.
Counsel Calucci?
Counsel Calucci, motion approved.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Absent Counsel Kapano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Ways and Means Committee, do you want me to read these things that are to be set down?
Wayne, what's the vote? Is it the?
It's unanimous vote consent of the Ways and Means Committee.
Take that in the form of a motion. Do I hear a second or a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Public Safety Committee, there was no action. Public Safety Committee, the farming individuals were appointed as constable, Frittenden, Thornton, William Lavine, and James McLaughlin.
Who were the birds, you didn't say they all? Okay. Counsel Barton, is that a unanimous vote of the Public Safety Committee?
I'm calling safety, all, public safety, yes.
Unanimous vote of the Senate, what? Motion made to accept this vote of safety. Second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry.
License.
I'm sorry, license.
License Committee?
unanimous vote of the committee, motion accepted.
All, motion made to accept the License Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Finance Committee lays over to the next meeting.
Any new business?
Counsel Creighton, I'd like to make a motion that the Lynn City Council send a letter to the owners of the Hawthorne, the former Hawthorne restaurant, requesting they come before the council to answer any questions we may have about their future plans and some of the issues they've had with their facade and building conditions.
Okay. Would you also, in addition to that, like to invite EDIC Director, Mr. Cowell?
Yes.
Okay. Separate letters. We'll take them in form of one motion. Discussion. Counsel Ford.
I was brought up at the EDIC meeting tonight. Very trusting meeting, about 33 Central Lab. And I know we all had busy nights last Tuesday. I wish more councils could have made for that overview of all the projects that are going on. But I felt a lot of times.
Well, that's great. Then it's a very timely motion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.